Uh, call the meeting of the finance committee together for five thirty. October twenty first. Thanks, everybody for coming. And um, we got seven, nine items. Pat, the first one is your traditional item. You wanna start with that?
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Uh, tonight I'll be presenting the September revenue versus expenditure report. This is the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-five or twenty-five percent of the year. You can see our revenues are uh, a little above the twenty-five percent at twenty-six percent. And our expenses are at thirty-four percent. I did mention in our last meeting that we had finalized our net school spending number. So you will see that in this report. The final carryover amount is nineteen million four thousand seventy-eight dollars. So that's increasing our budget to nine hundred and forty-eight point two million. It also includes a five hundred thousand dollar transfer that we made earlier this year from stabilization. It does not include the transfer that was made in the October meeting. You'll see that in the October statement.
Did you say our budget, the city budget went up to nine hundred and something?
Nine hundred and forty-eight million, the driving force being the net school spending carryover amount of eighteen million dollars, which is basically funds that were left over in the school budget from last year that we have to transfer into this year's budget. So it's not new money. It's just money that was left over and the safeguards it from the free cash calculation. This is money that is owed the school department or per chapter seventy rules and regulations.
Okay, what was our budget when we approved it in June?
It was nine hundred and twenty-eight million, seven hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Going from nine twenty-eight to nine forty-eight because of that supposed amount?
Net school spending is the big driver and we also had a five hundred thousand dollar transfer from stabilization funds as part of the special act we did for a retired police officer.
Oh, right. What's your level of concern or everything's okay? Just it's?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, you'll notice that the expenditures at thirty-four percent are elevated, but as we've discussed in the past, that's due to the appropriation payment we make for the retirement system on July first, so.
So we always run high?
We always run high there and um, you'll see like the Public Works Department is at fifty-two percent. But that is a factor of us sweeping the funds for electric bills. We put them in one central account and then pay them out of there. So we expend them at the beginning of the year. But it's, it's not a true expenditure that we pay the twelve months to EverSource and uh, Constellation, who is our supplier on a monthly basis, it's not.
Do we have any other like? I know there's nothing else quite like net school spending, but is there any other open items that could affect this budget?
No, uh, that's the only item that see an increase like that that wouldn't come before the council for consideration.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thanks for the report. Any questions on that report? Any questions out there on TV land? I don't see any. Okay, thanks, Pat. The orders we have, um, the next one is Mass Works Infrastructure Road in three and two point eight million. Somebody got that one?
Yep, uh, good evening, counselors. Chris Signalley, DPW Director. Uh, we have been awarded two point eight million dollars as part of a construction grant for reconstruction of West Street, which is actually West Street, um, Plainfield Street and the intersection of Plainfield, um, Avocado uh, and West. Uh, we had received a grant a couple of years ago for design through Mass Works. And once design was complete, we submitted it back to Mass Works for a construction grant and were provided an award. Um, I may have mentioned at a previous meeting, Matt, we are also coordinating this project with Mass DOT. Mass DOT is in the process of redesigning a brand-new North End Bridge. Uh, so we will be coordinating the design of this project uh, with the construction of the North End Bridge project, which is scheduled to start in twenty twenty-seven.
Is that a, Chris, is that a, an improved North End Bridge or a new North End Bridge?
Brand-new, a hundred million dollars, uh, widened bridge. Um, new pier locations. I thought initially it was just gonna be a superstructure, uh, but it is actually gonna be a complete bridge replacement.
It's gonna be to the right, um, going in, going from Springfield will be to the right of the existing bridge or, you know?
Actually, the south side of the bridge is gonna stay exactly where it is. It's gonna get widened to the north. And from what I saw from them, they're gonna be doing that in three stages, uh, so that they can always keep three lanes on the bridge open for traffic uh, in both directions during the construction. So uh, they are just starting the design. It will be a design build uh, starting next spring, so we'll be coordinating with them on that. But we provided them this design uh, for the, uh, for the West Street project.
Right, um. Sounds good. So that's what this grant is for, huh?
Yeah, it's for the West Street, uh, redoing West Street, Plainfield and the intersection of Plainfield, Avocado and West.
Yeah, great. All right, any questions from anybody for Chris?
Yes.
Sorry, I looked down. Who we got up there?
Yeah, Councilor Perez, yep.
Counselor Perez, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Um, I just wanna make a comment. Thank you, Chris. Um, it was a great meeting with the community. Um, one of the questions that I would ask before this meeting is, um, and could you could call me later, the update with the bridge that crossed from the North End to West Springfield about the painting. So if you could touch base with me later on, so we could have that as part of the community meeting. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, good to see you. Uh, did you say a hundred million dollars for the North End Bridge?
Hundred million dollars, yeah.
And who's the funding source for that?
That's Mass DOT, federal government. And uh, they're also working at the other end of town with the bridge over uh, Chickaby River into Ludlow is, there's gonna be a new one there and it's ninety million dollars.
And you said twenty twenty-seven is so short to the ground?
Yeah, for the North End Bridge is gonna be twenty twenty-seven. I don't have a date for the other one, uh, but it is gonna be a design build with construction starting early twenty-seven.
Now, are we, are we basically replacing this bridge uh, as a preventive measure or?
Yeah, it's reached, it's reached its uh, it's reached its life cycle. They've done a ton of repairs on it over the years. Uh, and it really needs to be replaced. It's antiquated as far as with uh, no, you know, it's stuff tough on pedestrians, uh, so they really wanna and it's structurally, it's not hanging out the way that it should be. So they really wanna, they, rather than spending a ton of money rehabbing it, which they've done a bunch of times, uh, now it's reached its life cycle to put in a new one.
Understood, but this two point million dollars for the grant is gonna be for West Street, Avocado Street and Plainfield Street, correct?
Correct.
That's gonna be infrastructure changes, uh, just fixing the roads, basically?
Yeah, doing some roadway, uh, relaying out the roadways a little bit. A lot of pedestrian work down there because one of the big problems is, is getting the pedestrians across the street uh, from one side of uh, West Street to the other, especially now that the pride station is there. Uh, so that's one of the main things that we're really looking at is trying to figure out a way to get people from one side of the street to the other, uh, as well as the intersection there, which is really antiquated. And with the new schools that have been built in the uh, along Plainfield Street to the north, traffic is, there's a lot more traffic there than there used to be, you know, uh, ten, twelve years ago.
Chris, will you be able to speak a little bit of the safety improvements for crossing the road to the intersection here? Where the uh, gas station is from Avocado is coming down?
Yeah, we're gonna, I, I, I know we're gonna be putting in a protected crosswalk through there. I don't know exactly where it's gonna be. I'll have to take a look at the plan, but I know we're gonna be putting in a protected crosswalk to get people from one side to the other.
What does that mean?
Uh, that it's gonna be like, it's not just gonna be a painted crosswalk. There's gonna be lights and beacons uh, with it. So um, you know, that's protected. So when people need to go across the street, uh, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna hit the button and uh, be able to cross the street safely. Because right now, people are just kinda running across the uh, the median there and sooner or later, you know, something bad's gonna happen.
All right, thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Counselor Delgado.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Chris, kudos to your team on, on this grant. Um, I think that's exciting. As somebody who grew up in the North End and has walked that bridge and how narrow that is, it's uh, actually exciting to see that, um, as well as um, the road work on there. I did have a question. Um, seeing as the North End Bridge is gonna get done, West Street's gonna get done, are there any talks about the bridge going over ninety-one? At all?
That needs repairs. It needs repainting. Uh, bridge itself is in good condition. We actually looked at that a number of years ago uh, through Mass DOT because as part of the casino project, they were looking to possibly do some roadway work there and the way the bridge is laid out. Uh, they weren't able to. The bridge itself is in good condition over ninety-one and it's actually two separate bridges. It's over ninety-one and over the rail line. Uh, the bridge is in good condition right now. It really just needs to be painted. It's in lousy condition visually, number one, and needs to be repainted.
Well, the reason I ask is cuz um, back in my mayor's office days, the, the community there did a lot of work in terms of fighting for pedestrian safety and we, that ended with the result of the work of getting the tunnel under the railroad. And I remember being part of those conversations. Uh, but the, the, that bridge over ninety-one, I mean, it's still a main connector to, you know, the, you know, where the church is, the Creek Orthodox, Donals, the kind of that center there. And so this, there's not really a wide enough sidewalk, for lack of a better term.
Right, that's gonna end up being part of the work that we're gonna be doing is making the pedestrian from, basically from Main Street almost to the North End Bridge is gonna be better because that is one of the big problems there.
Yeah, it's always been for, for decades, um, even when I, when I was a kid walking, um, across the train tracks. Uh, the other question I had, you did, you brought up the Indian Orchard Ludlow Project. Just curious, I know in the past there were talks about kind of moving the bridge down, so it was kind of like a, just a regular intersection versus kind of the weird thing that it does now? Is that still part of that? Because I know there were some talk properties there.
From what I've seen, the new bridge is gonna be built just to the, make sure I get it right, to the west of the existing one. Uh, the land that is there is owned by, if I remember correctly, is all owned by EverSource. Uh, they have a power plant there and there's a dam on the upstream face. It's going to be moved. I have not seen the preliminary plan to see how far it's gonna be moved. Uh, but it's gonna end up hopefully cleaning up the intersections on both sides a little bit. Um, without having to take a ton of the property there. But I know, you know, we as a city own on the corner, uh, where you go over the bridge now, there's an old gas station. And then there's a parcel next to it that we own that I know the state is going to be using. So it's going to be moved. I just don't know right now how far it's gonna be moved, but it will be moved to, to the west to make that a little, yeah, make that uh, transition, especially if you're going from Parker to Main Street over the bridge onto either East or West Street, uh, depending on your point of view there, uh, making that a little better.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Chris. Is that the bridge that sometimes known as the Putts Bridge?
Yeah, it's the Putts Bridge, yeah. I try not to use that because not too many people know what that is, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's called the Putts Bridge.
Okay, so the other bridge that's over there, the all green one that's down to the left?
Yep.
Been closed for a while, right?
Uh, it was closed for about three months. We had to do deck repairs and replacements uh, over last, early last winter. Uh, so we had it closed for about, I, I wanna say it was a little bit over two months. Uh, it's, it's that old um, um, metal grid deck and they were uh, they were rusted out, so we had to repair. We actually had to repair both sides, part in Springfield and part in Ludlow. We did uh, all the design effort and we oversaw the construction. We paid for half, Ludlow paid for half. Uh, but that bridge right now is in, I'm gonna say, good condition, okay, but there is a long-term plan for uh, upgrade and replacement on that as well.
But it's, it's open now?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it was open, uh, I wanna say it was like December of last year. I may be off, but I know it was uh, late last year or early this year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that item? Okay, thanks. Item three, prevention and early childhood services grant increased sixty thousand. Somebody got that? Anybody know anything about that?
Well, I can, I thought, I, I can speak to that. It's a, uh,
I can speak to that. No problem, Kathy. Um, I was expecting somebody from health to be here, but I can speak to it, no worries. Um, so this is a sixty thousand dollar increase to our health department's prevention and early childhood services grant. Um, the program goal is to implement a comprehensive multi-domain set of prevention services directed at a proposed age range of children prenatal to eleven years of age for the parent caregiver, giver with a history of substance abuse, misuse and addiction. Um, this funding will also support the salary of the program director and partial benefits.
And? So um, so where does that grant go? Like, in Chris's situation, we know it goes to DPW. Where is this grant going?
Yep, so this one is uh, for HHS.
HHS, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any questions on that ones? Anybody? Thank you. Uh, moving along to item four. Senior Community Service Employment Grant. In kind match.
Yeah, that'll be for Department of Other Affairs. Um, this is a grant that we received for fiscal year twenty uh, four. And they, the initial grant was amount was like four hundred and seventy-three thousand, which paid for the wages. The grant requests us to give the seniors more hours. And this is just the difference now. Um, so they're just reimbursing us for what we paid out.
This is like a work, one of those senior work grants, is that what you're?
Senior employment.
Senior employment.
Right, the senior age that we do.
Yeah.
So this is just a reimbursement of, uh, they're just giving us back the money that we already spent out.
Do we have enough?
Yeah, everything's covered.
Everything's covered, good. All right. Great, thanks, Roy. Anybody have a comment on that? Any questions? Thank you, Roy. Item five, Health and Wellness Nomad Required Twenty Grand.
Yep, I can take that one as well, Mr. Chair. Um, so this is a twenty thousand dollar grant from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. Um, this is a new grant for FY twenty-five. And the goal of this grant is to promote health and wellness, um, through library programs in Springfield, specifically, um, teen services, and they will be targeting mental health. Uh, Molly mentioned that, um, all of our partners are in place. She didn't specify who the partners were, but they are already in place and ready to go.
What does that exactly mean? It's a mental health, it's so improve mental health or to support mental health initiative. Is it driven by the library or are these the partners that she's referring to?
Yeah, so I think it'll be a little bit of both. Um, I think the partners will be carrying out most of the work, um, but it'll be targeting the, the teens, um, the teen section in the library.
Okay, great, that's good. All right. Got anybody on that one? Pete?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good on that one? I wanna make sure you're okay over there. Um.
You built the library.
That's right. Very nice library. Number six, oh my goodness, cash donation, seven hundred and thirty-two bucks. Is there anything to say on this, Lindsay, except that?
No, not really. Um, Sequoia, is there anything to add to that donation?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, other authorization, Arena School. We go from seven hundred and thirty-two bucks to an half million. Arena School feasibility study, who can talk about that?
Man right next on the other side.
Brought me here for a reason.
Come to hear what we had to say.
We're in the eligibility period right now for the uh, Arena School. That basically, we have to submit volumes and volumes of paperwork debt to to the MSBA, so we're ready for the next stage. Those volumes are capital plan, capital maintenance plan, education plan. There's a lot of work that goes into it. So the school department has a lot of work that they have put into this. So we're through that right now. This is the last part to say we're financially ready to move forward into the feasibility study. So the feasibility study will be hiring a designer, an OPM, and we doing some testing and modeling of stuff so we can see where the school potentially can go and move to the next step.
Not, not on Plainfield Street, right?
No, no, not, it's Avocado, no. This is what will determine where we're going. It will give us a steering direction with these consultants on board that can help us steer us in the right direction. We need five acres, a minimum of five acres for a school the size of Arena. So if anyone knows where there's five acres in North End, just let me know and it will be easy. That's pretty much where we are right now. We have more questions than answers.
So how about this question? Um, I can't think of a school project going on right now. Obviously, we just did those two double schools kinda thing. Do we, what's in line ahead of this that we haven't done yet, sorry?
As far as schools, this is the next one.
This is the next one.
This is our core project that we've been spinning on for the last five, six years.
From a lot of points of view.
Yeah.
Rehabbing the school for, with the flooding and all that.
That will be part of our study is, this is for rehabbing the school or doing a new school. And obviously, we all think we know the answer.
But, but you have to look at both.
Yeah, you have to look at both. It's a requirement of the MSBA. And they, they rely on the experts to tell them. Like, the last ones were pretty easy. They were over a hundred years old. They're functionally obsolete. I would say Arena is functionally obsolete, if you haven't been in there.
I love that school. I saw it in there. That was a while ago. Anyway, all right, anything, any questions here? Yeah, Counselor Delgado?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Pete, good to see you. Uh, so basically, it's two point five mil, just to see if we can build something different there.
You get the design services, the OPM. It's part of the process. The MSBA has a well-laid-out process and we're familiar with it. So it's the OPM. The design, designer will help us along this way in any testing or other costs that we need to take care of.
What's the timeline for this? I know if you had a question, please do.
It's a five-year project from when we start today to when we open.
Okay, so basically, we don't know if we can build in the land that's on now.
We cannot build on the land. It's, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have the opportunity. In my opinion, we wouldn't have the opportunity.
Where would that be?
Where would, what?
Why, why would that be? Why can't we build there? Because you talked about how many, which, which, we're running on land, that's obvious.
Right.
Why can't we?
Well, we'd have to relocate the students that are there now and knock that building down before we have the other building up. So all those costs would be incurred by the city. They do not pay for a rental of a school.
Okay.
Or modulars. And quite frankly, that was a really bad location. It's in a wetland, basically. There's
That wasn't the next question, I remember.
There's pumps that are, literally, this, there's six pumps that run all day, this pit.
Do they have a, do they have a flooding years ago?
Absolutely.
It was a flood, is that's why I thought.
It's a problem school.
I remember. Uh, thank you, Pete, um. Mr. Sullivan. So this is two point five million, um, for bond authorization. What's a wiggle room here? I know you talked about before some capital improvements and some things on the pipeline for, that are gonna be needed by authorization.
Yeah, I mean, presently, right now, our bond capacity
One capacity.
inside the debt limit is about four hundred and sixty-eight million, so we're nowhere near bumping up against that.
Of course.
Um, we do have outstanding debt. I believe it's about two hundred and thirty-seven million right now. So
It's all gonna be pretty good.
Yeah, we do have some debt that's authorized and we haven't issued bonds on that yet. That's a very high number because it includes the seven hundred and fifty-five million in uh, pension obligation bonds that the council authorized that we did not move forward on, but that is still out there on our books as authorized, unissued.
And refresh my memory, uh, our bond capacity is based upon the budget?
It's five percent of the total equalized value of the city. So, city property, yeah.
Five percent.
So it's, it's a very high number. I mean, the study that the finance department does is what can we actually afford?
And you feel comfortable with this?
Yes.
Yes, I don't think we have a choice either.
Cover my bases and tell my, yeah.
And we knew this was coming. We were just waiting for them to go through all the steps and we knew this was the next one. So we've been aware of the fact that Peter was gonna come to us um, for this money.
Right.
This is the contract obligation we have with the MSBA and this is a requirement to have the money.
I just have curiosity, uh, and I'm projecting ahead, but how much are we looking at for, for in the school?
A lot.
Are we gonna be reimbursed by the state, of course?
Will be re, reimbursed eighty percent. That's part of the contract that will, will be, and that's the highest they can go to is eighty percent. It's eighty percent of eligible cost. So that eligible cost word is a big word because they have a lot of caps on different things, but we've been very successful on figuring out how to get around those caps and getting the most bang for our buck. Right now, a school, they're projecting schools to be, and the, the MSBA does a great job. If you go on their website, they're projecting a thousand dollars a square foot. So a school, Arena size would be a hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. But you, the ninety million and the hundred million for the bridges, that's a lot of money too. You wouldn't guess that it was gonna be that much.
No, 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 I'm shocked, so. But this also speaks of how, you know, what we are spoken before, so how we have to be wise with the money. And so this is obviously, like I always like to say, this is a need, not a want, because those kids deserve good school without drowning. And then that's what we call for a while, so, but absolutely, so anyways, thank you, Pete.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Share? Yeah, go ahead, Maria.
Yeah, um, one other thing that I heard that I want a clarification, um, as a former school committee, this was the priority seven year, almost seven years ago, um, as the priority during a school. And I know one of the biggest complications was that is, um, during a school never should have been there due to the complication with Mass DOT and the issues. But, um, during a school has been an issue as a first priority for over ten years. Um, and now I'm hearing that we on the final step. That's, that's correct?
That's correct. This will be the first, we're gonna enter into a contract with the MSBA, so that's we're in the system now.
Okay, okay, so I'm glad to hear that because uh, from day one that I was a school committee member, that was the first priority that we had officially through the city had, um, reflected as during a school. So I'm glad to hear that and I hope it doesn't take ten more years for the development of the school. Thank you.
Well, you were involved in, uh, Brightwood School, so you know a lot about the process. We'll have reach-outs, we'll have oh, we'll need a lot of help, uh, with the community getting this all the way through. Because the community support is very, uh, very much needed and wanted. It's, it's a big deal to the MSBA.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I'm here. Thank you so much.
I thought you were gonna get a caller too, Maria.
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Delgado.
I just wanna echo my colleague, uh, Counselor Phillips' comments. I mean, this school, I mean, in terms of the work that you've been doing probably the last decade, but this is probably decades in the making um, for this school with the amount of floods it's had, with the amount of work that Pat Sullivan and folks have done to put in to keep it safe for last, for the students there with, uh, the moisture issue. So I'm excited. I'm a little sad that my daughter won't be around to see it as she's a current fourth grader at the Arena. Uh, but I'm glad for all the future residents and students, um, to be able to access that. I guess one of my questions is prob, probably too far out is you know, just wondering what's gonna happen with you know, just wondering what's gonna happen with the existing building once the new Harina is done. You know, what happens with that? Is that, you feel like that's gonna be demolished because of the the issues? There's a tunnel that goes under underground that also connects, you know, and and I'm real sympathetic, because I mean, I grew up in Plainfield. You know, access to get from Plainfield Street to to, you know, cross the ri- the railroad and the train tracks. So I'm just curious what happens to the facility, particularly the uh the tunnel underneath that connects both sides.
Well, the great part about is I'll I'll build the school and then I turn it over to Tim Sheehan to figure out the rest.
Good answer.
So uh, that'll be something that we really need to look at because that connects the neighborhoods together. So Amtrak did, I think, a great job down a little further north, so. If something like that could be developed, I think that would be a really good thing. Because the neighborhoods need to be connected.
That'll be a bigger question for all of our folks and I, and Chris Ignoli's not on there, um but yeah, alright.
It'll be part of our project, so we'll, we'll figure all that out.
Alright, thank you.
I have a question. I have a question, people. Let's see, does anyone else have a question for Pete? So my question, Pete, is who's the driver of this? Uh obviously, the school department. As Pat Roach and his organization, and then are you the driver in the city, or is it you and the finance team, or you know?
It's the finance team, uh it's it's a big ask, so it's obviously the finance team needs to 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 move it forward. But like Maria said, it's been ten years in the process. We know it needs to be done, and there's other schools behind it that need to be done, quite frankly.
Yeah.
So we do have other priority one schools that are going in every year.
How much were those uh? You know, the the various one and Lincoln, uh Brightwood.
Lincoln was sixty-eight million, Deberry was ninety-two million.
And what was their per square foot?
About a little under five hundred. So we've doubled cost in the last five years, six years. I have one more question.
Yeah, of course, go ahead.
One more question, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, uh that Harina School. The style, what is, I forget what the style is called, but the concrete, um.
We won't do that.
No?
No.
No, what I'm saying is, do we have any other buildings that we own that are that same style? Because it's the same style that the courthouse is built
Correct.
as, which is another, a number of whoever, somebody got hooked up with a contract, you know, decades ago with, by the state to create those concrete buildings that have been issued all over the state, not just here in Springfield, but we just have two prime examples in the courthouse and arena.
Correct.
So I'm just curious, do you know if we have any other facilities that are built?
We do not have any built
Like that.
Buildings in the seventies that are built like that.
Yes, go ahead, Stephen.
Evening, everyone. Stephen Howard, uh question. You said, uh the community needs to get involved. Are you talking about the greater Springfield community, or are you just talking about areas that would be impacted by the school?
I would say the greater Springfield area, whoever. I mean, it impacts everybody in the city of Springfield, so. And I would think that everyone would have a say.
And uh what outreach has been done previously? And what would be, what's projected to make sure that the word gets out using both traditional and social media?
Both traditional and social media. I mean, Maria Perez, she was chair, or she was in the school committee, she brought on a lot of people. There were a lot of people at these community meetings, not only for that school, but Deberry, Deberry had quite a following as well. So there's Facebook. There's uh uh counselors that reach out, there's neighborhood councils, we go to everybody. Thank you.
Excellent, um anybody else?
Brutalist, that's what it's called.
What is it?
Brutalist.
A good report by everybody, good report, Pete.
Thank you.
Um. Supplemental budget increase in state aid, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Let me explain this one.
This is for the school department. Is Pat Roach on? He's supposed to be on. I can, I can take it. I don't see that he's here unless he's that phone number, but I don't, I don't think so. Um, so, um. Counselor, we've come to you often with this when the state budget is um is finalized after the city budget is, sometimes we have to to come to you to adjust state aid numbers, and this is an instance where we actually got an increase in chapter seventy for the school department. So it doesn't necessarily affect anything on the city side, but it's an increase to the school's budget. So this is just um accepting that additional funding. I will say, there was also a decrease to um charter reimbursement, so actually, next meeting on the November eighteenth, we'll come to you with that. Um but this is for the in- increase in chapter seventy.
Okay. Okay, so we just have to accept it, and then it goes where?
It goes to the school department budget.
Okay, any questions for anybody on that? Okay, thanks, Lindsay. Um. Looks like we have one left. Order approving a request for proposal solicitation. From the city of Springfield School Department. For a contract for time and attendance services.
So I, I mean, I guess I can start. I thought Pat was gonna be on here, and I know someone from the school department's on here too. The current time and attendance um that we have, the Chronos system, is gonna have an end of life in twenty twenty-five. So we were, we had to go out and try to, we, the school department, the um payroll department put out an RFP for other um companies that could um
Buy that.
provide the time and attendance. There was, I I think there were three applications, there was a review committee, three proposals, there was a re- review committee. Um uh Chronos did apply. Um they're a current vendor, but they have decided they wanted, um the committee um has decided with T, they were gonna go with the TCP software. Um it and integrates to Munis, it can do our um full leave management capacities, which we were doing a lot by hand, and it also talks to telestaff, which is what the um fire department uses. So we're gonna be able to implement it all um in one uh with TCP, whereas we couldn't with the current Chronos. Um the five years allows us to save about thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. So we're asking the council permission to enter into a five-year instead of just a three-year contract with TCP.
Okay, and and the project team and whoever was involved in the decision, everybody's all solid on?
Yes, they were, the project team was the one, the team that recommended, and Chris Murphy is on. It, she was, um her and Karen Briggs led the whole um committee, the team, and that that was their suggestion. We had everyone around and we discussed it, went through the pros and cons of everything. And that was the, what everyone chose, TCP.
Great. Well, Chris, thanks for uh attending the meeting. Um but do you have anything you'd like to say on it? There may be a couple of questions for you, but um.
Uh, no, um Kathy, you know, um kinda fills you in. We met with three vendors. Chronos being one of them, uh TCP, we spoke to various um cities that have implemented them already, and we were very impressed with the functionality. Um not only are we gonna try to bring telestaff in, but we also have a smart find express for our subsystem that we're gonna integrate into TCP also. Um we are looking forward to working with them. Um their presentation was impressive, and I think it'll bring us to the next level.
Great. What uh department are you in? In school department, correct?
Uh, the payroll director.
Your role director, great. Alright, anybody got questions? Um, Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Kathy, basically, the main drivers for changing to TCP is one, the saving of thirty-five thousand dollars a year for five years. And the ability to integrate uh the system to talk to each other.
Right, I mean, TCP was a better software um that we thought, because it it could integrate more. So we looked at all three softwares, and that's the one they chose. The reason we even went out is because Chronos is having an end um end of life in twenty twenty-five, and they have a new system coming out. So we went out to RFP um to see if we could get a, you know, whether there was a better system out there, whether the cost um so that we can save the city money, and see if there was something better, that we could get one software that could do everything, instead of having different departments you know, on different software, and um like she said, they're gonna get the sub, sub uh substitute teachers on there and telestaff with fire, so it can all be in one software. And the reason we're going from three to five is because we can save money.
It's our curiosity, so, because we don't, we don't punch in ourselves, but what software are you seeing like everybody else? How, how do they punch in?
Well, everybody punches in different. Um if you're hourly, you have timestamps and you Chris, you wanna talk?
Um yeah, there's three, there's three types. There's project viewer, a salary employee just goes on their time card and enters their hours. There's a swipe where you have a badge as you're walking in the building, you swipe the time clock, and then there's timestamp when you log onto your computer and you timestamp in, and it depends on the position, HR determines which of um those um which one you use.
Right, so Chris, I realized very quickly, this conversation is a much bigger conversation for later. I do thought in ten to to wrap it up today, but can you give me the thirty-second overview of why that is, why there's like different systems? Why, why can't we integrate everybody? I mean, salary positions, I get it, but hourly employees. It will seem that was funny that way.
Hourly employees, we need, it needs to be granular, more granular than um salaried. Salaried, you know, you are getting paid your salary. There's no overtime. With hourly employees, you have to record overtime. And they're expected to work their scheduled hours, so if they're short or they're over, it has to be addressed, and it has to be more granular than just entering like a salary employee does.
I think it was explanation, I don't think quite got, I quite got it, but uh.
Certain people don't have computers. If you come into the office, you have a computer, you log in, you check in, and then there's other um you know, like drivers and DPW, they swipe when they come in, so that automatically clocks them in.
No, I get it, I get it. I just, I, in my mind, I see a system in which, again, we're not gonna solve this today, but a system in which just punch in, you know, particularly hourly employee, and even for for salary employee managers and the department heads where you're accounted for your time. Uh so, but uh, you know, I I bring it up because it will seem to me, I don't know, I'm just speaking out of uh gut instinct, I guess. I wonder if we're bleeding any money out. Meaning that if we are accurately, uh you're checking, you're checking your head now, but uh.
My own.
No, please, if Chair, if you like.
The the swipe, the sit-down mic, boys use, where they sign on the computer, they sign in. It's very accurate. Once they sign in, it starts to record in the time. Salary, we, we do put in our hours, but we're here a lot of different hours, so it kind of works out well for us.
Okay. I remember vaguely, I could be mistaken, um the audio comedian at one point talked about Chronos, but I don't remember the specifics. Um, but anyways, a conversation for much later.
So is it a system that both the s- school department and the city uses, will use the
Yes.
same system? Do they now, or is this a new thing?
No, they do, we do it now. The city and the school department use the same system. We all use Chronos. And it's all gonna be end, Chronos is end of life in December of twenty twenty-five, and the implementation will take us close to a year. So that's why we prefer to go to the five years, because it's gonna take us a year to get it up and running.
Yeah. Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Good answers. Any, any other questions on anything?
I think that's great that we're stepping up and integrating and kind of I know these programs, they don't, lots lots to each other, and so I think it's cool that we're kind of moving ahead on that. Hopefully, I guess, talk to each other.
Uh, no, then we've reached out to other communities who have, so.
So credit to to Chris and and the team there for for, yeah, this time.
Mr. Share?
Yes.
Yes, and I have to emphasize that at the previous meeting, we were just talking about updating technology. I think this is a form of updating technology. Thank you so much.
Hey, Maria, you keep us on that path. Thanks, Counselor Chris. Um alright, well, uh thanks, everybody is prepared. Nice meeting. Thank you very much. Take care.
That was not a speaker, must not be working.
Are we off, Mr. Chair?
We're done, yeah.
Great job.
I, I guess we could make a vote if you wanna make a motion.
Uh yeah, make a motion to approve the items on the agenda.
The motion second.
Second, oh, Alvin, Melon's here, okay. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, great, thank you very much.